Lord, thank you so much for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to meet freely. Thank you for this country that we can do this in, Lord. Lord, thank you for these administrators, these teachers, all our support personnel. Lord, we thank you. Continue your blessing each and every one again. Lord bless this board. Give us wisdom, understanding, and all of you doing all that decisions. Be with us in all our decisions, Lord. We lift ourselves up to be in Christ's name, amen. Thank you, graciousness.
Sing the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I went to somebody else's meeting two weeks ago and the president did all that.
Did it all.
So, Brandon, we wanted to relieve you of prayer.
Give me the Gary show.
Yeah, the Gary show.
That'd be great.
Yeah, wake, wake them up.
All right, roll call. Randy Rents?
Here.
Beau Barton? Melinda Ballard?
Here.
Baron Glass?
Here.
Maria Bass?
Here.
Harry Castles?
Here.
Johnny Val?
Here.
All right. Adam A is Executive Committee report.
Well, we're all the checks and everything seems to be in order. Sales taxes are down again this month compared to last year. This time last year, hopefully look big up. Other than that, everything's pretty much all in order.
All right, thank you, Randy. All right, Adam B is review and vote on approval of the September 12, 2024 board meeting minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the September 12 minutes.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, Adam C has recognized Ashley Baker as October Glory of the Month. Ms. Cleveland?
Thank you, Ms. President. Good evening, everyone. Ashley, you can come on the end. While she's coming, I'm going to tell you a little bit about Ashley and what some of her colleagues and friends had to say. Ashley is such a bright light and a true blessing to CES. She's very dependable and comes to work with a positive attitude every day. She's one of the first ones there and one of the last to leave. She chooses to take on the morning duty spot so that she can greet the students with a friendly smile and some motivational music every morning. Along with creating relationships with students, she also works hard to maintain a good relationship with her teachers and helps pride them in the work. She's always telling them, if you need something, just holler. And she means it. She tries very hard to ensure that teachers have a clean environment to work in. She works very diligently, very hard, greets the students each and every morning, and works after hours to make sure that the rooms are clean. We love our Ms. Ashley. October 2024 Caldwell Parish School Board Employee of the Month, Ashley Baker for your commitment and dedication to your community or schools and your children.
She has a 15-minute speech, Ms. President.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank y'all.
All right, Adam D is the county update. Chris?
To the continued.
For last meeting.
Okay, so Bessie approved the new accountability model that goes into effect with 25, 26 school year. The name of it is grow, achieve, and thrive, and that's basically the three parts of it. So, on the first part of it, the grow, they're going to change the way that they measure growth. Typically, we get a growth index for students and it's unsatisfactory to approaching basic to basic. But they're going to split that in half. And so kids are going to move from, excuse me, from low unsatisfactory to high unsatisfactory. And then to low approaching basic to high approaching basic. So it just kind of gives a little more room for growth.
Chris, just a quick, what's the difference between low unsatisfactory and high still unsatisfactory?
It's just going to be the scale score. It's just going to be the scale score. Are they, are they moving number-wise? Like if the lowest score you can make is a 650 and that's low unsatisfactory, did they move to a 696?
So that work, they scored out of six, they move to 62, that's?
That's considered, yeah.
So, I mean, how?
Whatever the scale score is going to be. And we really don't know what those, I don't know what the cut lines are going to be.
So how does a student benefit moving two points for still failing?
Well, for the student, they're actually showing growth and the school will get points for that. So any.
Right, but how does that help the student who, which we should be educating the student? I ain't too concerned about the score.
Yeah. Well, I mean, at any point, there's growth. I mean, that's going to benefit the student. And we, as we go, you can go to the next slide. As we move, the, it's trying to move that student to by the time they're in ninth grade and they're taking the end of course test, they're taking the leap for the high school, they get master. So if they've started out as a low SAT, the goal is going to be to move them to that master. Because that's, that's the goal, is to get master. So I guess it's just going to be growth is growth is growth, and we just hope we can get them there.
As many things as I don't like about the new accountability, I do appreciate this part of it because it's going to be, what, 30%?
Yeah.
A little more for elementary. Okay. We do appreciate that they recognize growth because we work so hard to grow kids.
But Chris, I'll come and talk here, but I, what I'm, what I'm hearing is the school is getting credit, but the kid is not because the kid is still failing.
Well, even though they have that label as unsat, I mean, if they are.
Which is what counts.
Moving, they're growing, then they're making strides. So hopefully we can continue them in that pattern so that they'll get to their passing. I mean, it may take.
And you got a conflict with this?
No, we, she went out and actually fought against it.
Well, I mean, you're, that's what I'm saying again.
They didn't change anything after all that we did, but.
We don't want to paint the wrong picture.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's what I'm cautioning about, because I don't like this. I mean, it's, it's obvious, yeah, it's not, well, I mean, I think the people need to know that we're kidnapping kids. But I mean, you've already defended that, so.
And, and a lot of other people do too today.
Well, you did a better job.
So growth is, I mean, we will get, and this is the kind of the scorecard that they're going to be looking at. So the grow piece is that first column. They're going to get growth for math and they're going to get growth for English, and that's going to be all students. But then they're also going to get math and English growth for the lowest 25% of students. So those students that are really low, if they show growth, they're going to get kind of a double. We're going to get double for them. And then if we have any EL students that show growth, then they'll also be included in that. I think you have to have a certain number of kids that are EL be included in that.
The EL are students who don't speak English as a first.
Yeah, English, Spanish, yeah. And then the next piece of it is to, what's the next piece? Achieve.
Achieve.
So the next piece is achieve, and that is, go back to the.
Okay, sorry.
And that is the actual part of students who are proficient, and the state's definition of proficient is students who are at master. And so when we look at our LEAK scores, three to eight, and in high school, that's going to be a huge part of our SPS is what, what are the students scoring? Because the goal is going to be proficient and which is master.
And this is a part that frustrates us because.
It's going to be such a huge part.
You know, we, we, for years, proficiency was basic. And so if you can get to, get a student to basic, you can get them to an average, a C, then we feel like we're doing a good job and, and the state has just raised the bar there. And while we do want all of our students to be mastering, we do want that, it is, it is difficult.
These are the state numbers.
That was, I think that's, on that scorecard, they used 23. That was as a state, that was like statewide. Okay, so on the next page, this starts the achieve portion of it. Now, the achieve portion is only for the high school. The elementaries will get points from the grow and the achieve. So they're looking at growth and they're looking at their actual test scores. The high school will have this part that will also be a little bit of it, and it's college and career readiness. So it's basically thrive to go out into what they're going to do after high school. Of course, we know we have the university pathway. They graduate, they can go to a university or community college or a technical college with, hopefully without the need of remediation. That's the goal. And then we have the career pathway for a student to be prepared to go into the workforce or either go to community college and get further training to be able to get a job. So those are the two pathways that we have. And so what we're going to look at with thrive for the high school is we're looking at test scores, but we're also looking at graduation rate. And this is the accelerator. Basically, this is going to be, in the beginning, it's going to be, part of it's going to be incentive points, but eventually we have to get there toward the majority of our kids who get these. So under the university accelerator, the ACT, they did change it because TOPS is a 20, they did go back and change this to a 20. So where it has ACT of a 21, that did get changed. So they did back that up to a 20 because that's what they have to have for TOPS. So for a university accelerator, they have to have either an ACT of 20 or SAT of 1080. Not a lot of our kids take the SAT. And then that CLT, that's not something that's given around here, plus, it's not just that by itself. Plus, they either have to have an AP score or six dual enrollment credits with a C or better. So that's like our kids that are taking dual enrollment English or enrollment history, they have to have at least six hours. Or if on their ACT, they have a math of a 25 or an English of a 26 and that kind of stuff.
So Krista, uh, uh, what's her name? Mr. President's name? She's not here. How many kids would be affected now if they were going under this chart at high school? Percentage line, across.
Of the seniors that we had last year that graduated, probably 86 seniors, there were probably, let's say maybe 20 to 25 that would meet that university accelerator. And that's just because we've added so many dual enrollment classes, we would have some kids at a 20 with the six hours of dual enrollment.
Oh, 20, don't you have any of the 20 that's been, been scholars?
Yeah.
So that we have the.
So we had, because we had what, 18, 15, but then we have other kids that weren't scholars that had the.
They should have the.
Yeah, they had the 20 and they had the six hours. So 20 to 25 of them probably would have gotten the university accelerator. That one, to me, is going to be a little easier to get than the next one. The career accelerator, this is mainly what I talked about when I went before Bessie, is you, now, right now, kids have to have a certification to graduate. They have to have an industry-based certificate to graduate. And so we've worked really hard at reaching those statewide basic and statewide advanced credentials. Because out of the class of 24, we had probably five or six kids that got advanced credentials. Like they got a welding level two, or we had some kids that got the Adobe Visual Design Certificate. They were advanced. They got a lot of points for those advanced. Well, with this, when it changes, it won't just be that one IBC. They'll either have to get a bundle and they release the first five bundles and they're horrible, plus an internship. So they can't just get the IBCs by themselves and that count for anything. They have to have an internship. And so my thing is, my, part of my speech down there was, we're a small community. We don't have a lot of industry. The school board is the biggest employer. Where am I going to put these kids for an internship? Where an employer's going to pay them. They're going to take that responsibility. Yeah, it's just going to be a struggle to find those internships. The other part of that is they can have an advanced credential, but they have to have an internship. Or they have to have two years of a fast order line apprenticeship. And with that apprenticeship, I was looking at it today, and I've got to go back and kind of see where that falls. It was talking about them being fully employed. How's a senior going to be fully employed? They usually have classes to take their senior year, so I'm not sure how that falls. And then certificate of technical studies in a highly, high-demand industry, that's on a technical college campus. That's like going to Delta and spending a year and a half to get a certificate of technical studies. Which is difficult for us because we don't have a community college right next door to us. You know, there are some places like Winfield, Ruston, there's a community college sitting right there. The kids just walk across. We don't have that. We'd have to bus somewhere over there. We didn't have to go to that. So that one, to me, is probably the worst part of this whole thing, is that's going to really kill us.
But we had a small bus or a van that we could transport kids back and forth. Would that be beneficial? Or did we have enough to use that?
We used to have a bus, but then when diesel and everything went up, we stopped that. You would have to have a driver that would go over there to stay all, to stay with them that whole time.
The issue that I see too is that you, you, you send the kids over, then what if they want to participate in, in football or sports afterwards? They, they don't, can't get back, you know, because you go and you're, and you're spending half of your school day on a college campus instead of on your high school campus. So you're, a lot of our kids don't want to do that. They don't, they want to be in high school. They want to do the high school things.
And sometimes the classes at the community college, they don't match up. Like, we've had several kids the past two or three years that they would drive to Winsboro to take welding, but it was from four to eight. So they would just drive over to them themselves and do the welding from four to eight right back. That was just something they wanted to do. And we paid for it, we helped them, but a lot of times the classes don't work out, which would match our score.
So Krista, don't we have, I guess, a few buildings vacant here? My couldn't, because I know at one time, we paid, we had, you know, devil community college here. So, I mean, have we thought outside of making.
We can talk to them and say.
Maybe just get a, you know, kind of cost, because I mean, sometimes, you know, they may be willing or interested. Because I mean, the office got to be done, right? Yeah, so I mean.
And didn't we have somebody come from Delta this summer with jump start summers?
He came in this summer, yeah.
Was it a cost associated? Hey, so maybe, David, you might, man, maybe you can kind of move around some things and be creative.
Well, I mean, we're going to, we're going to look at it. We're going to try to figure it out. The problem is, this starts next year. This starts with next year's seniors. So these kids are juniors sitting in classes right now, and by the time. By the time we got the bundles, I mean, we can't change schedules. We can't develop anything right now. So we're looking at the first batch of kids who are going to graduate next year. So, you know, I'm going to get that in.
And they basically have three semesters left to accomplish every minute of this.
They're making them grow up too fast. When I give them a chance.
They're, they're making them make, you know, make a choice. My, my son came today and tutored with Mr. Foye, and he's still trying to figure out, well, what if I pass this kindergarten class, what am I going to do? They don't know what they want to do.
Yeah, you, you're changing the whole genetics of midstream, and that's not fair to them.
They should talk with freshman college. They're coming up.
So you said the state created this?
And then the other part of it is the service accelerator, and I kind of like this. They did add this to it. We don't have a lot of kids go military, but if we did have a student who wanted to go military, they would just have to make a 31 or higher on their ASVAB, and they would have to have their signed letter that they go in the military. So we do have that, that option for anybody who wants to go in the military. And we do have a few. Now, the internships will be kind of phased in over a period of several years, but like next year, if we have 25% of our career path students, which I figure will be 10 to 15 kids, then we can get five points of bonus. The next year, it goes up to 30%, and it's going to keep going until it reaches 65%. And when it reaches 65%, the bonus points will be taken away, and you'll be, you'll have to need that from the.
I just like playing some kind of video game.
Yeah. So once you, no, when you figure out how to play their game, then change it. That's the one. All right, so the next one is the scorecard with everything on it. So for the elementaries, you're looking at the first two columns, the growth and the achieve. And then the high school, you're looking at all three columns. The graduation rate will be a flat. There's not an index anymore. We got points for strength of diploma and cohort graduation and that, all that, that, it goes away. So it's just a flat graduation rate. And we're usually at 95 to 98. So that would be our graduation rate. That would be the points we get for that. The next column, nationally recognized exam, that'll be points that we get for ACT, SAT, work keys if they can score gold, or the ASVAB. And then the accelerate, that last one is the accelerator part that I just showed you with those three pathways to accelerate. So that's what we'll get our score from.
It's just putting a lot of pressure on the kids. I mean, that and the school, but I mean, the whole system is a lot of pressure.
And on the previous accountability system, we got points for an 18 on the ACT and points for a silver on the work keys. And so they raised it to a 20 and a gold. So, so they're one points.
So this is the revised measurement. So on the elementary and middle So on the elementary and middle school, the grow is worth more, so you get more points for students that are growing. Um, and then your achieve is in the purple, and in the high school, your grow is forty-two, so it's the most. Thirty-three for test scores and twenty-five for the thrive, which is the accelerator for it.
So the kid can go home and say, Mom, I'm, I'm growing, but I'm still failing.
But they have to keep growing, you know, if they don't grow, they have to keep growing. You have to start in third grade and grow all the way up.
So if they, if they step, if they step back one, I mean, then they've had it, huh?
Well, then, yeah, then the, the point they would have to get to the next year would be a lot. All right, and the next one. Um, so this is how they'll issue grades. So elementary and middle will get a score that will be different. Their, their scale will be different from the high school scale, and the district scale will be different from the other two scales. Whereas before, you just, you know, a sixty to a seventy-nine was a C, and you just even had a flat rate. Everything will be different. And you notice at the bottom, for each, the top ten percent get an A, the next twenty percent get a B, it's a bell curve. That's, that's what they're doing, they're making a bell curve. And each year, that curve's gonna change. So as the numbers change, the top ten get an A, the top twenty get a B. So you may be a C one year and a D the next, just because the, where everybody failed. But they're creating a bell curve.
The dumbest state in the world.
What are they trying to accomplish about this?
That I don't know. And it's strictly public education?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Uh, so what are they trying to accomplish?
They're trying to make you fail.
You can read between the lines.
Trying to make the public schools fail.
And they had a former, I think she was a former superintendent, and she's on the board somewhere now, and she just basically told them. You're trying to fail public schools, you did your Gagarin go, and she just basically told them.
When you go to graduation, you look out there and you see all those kids, and all those, um, colleges giving them.
Absolutely.
All these scholarships and stuff.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's crazy, it's super frustrating.
All right, and then the last one. So this is based on twenty-twenty-three, um, scores. They basically just took twenty-twenty-three SPS, put it into the new formula, and this is what the scale came out to for, um, the state using that twenty-twenty-three. So you see how every one of them is different as far as the, the scale. So the elementary, their scale is not gonna be the same as the high school scale. And then neither one of them's gonna be the same as the district's scale. And it's gonna change every year, so we don't know, like, now, I know a sixty's gonna give us a C. But we won't know from year to year where we're gonna fall until they put out the scores and develop the.
I don't get it, she's gonna get it.
And then the last one. This is what they sent us for us. Um, this would, what, if we use the new formula, that would be what our scores would have been in twenty-twenty-three. So the district, where we were an A to B, we were gonna see. The high school went from an A to a D because of the accelerator.
So what do you foresee this at next year?
Um.
I mean, about the same.
Yeah, C or D. And then, um, the junior high went from a C to a D, and then Columbia, Grace, and Union kinda, they basically, they stayed the same letter grade.
So a ten point curve plus to a D, like ten point.
Well, see, normally, you get I and O and DCAI, so that is strictly test scores. So they're taking, the elementaries are strictly test scores, which they pretty were, they were anyway, but they don't, they just had that little five percent of interest and opportunity. But the junior high had interest and opportunities and DCAI, which is the ninth grade kids get the points, get their credits to be a tenth grader at the end of the year. Well, they won't have that anymore, it's strictly, the junior high will strictly be test scores.
So Kim and, uh, Maria, this doesn't reflect what we talked about when we were going through the growth that you're seeing. They're seeing this, but they don't see the growth of the kid inside of the classroom, which is a disconnect because the, they're looking at this, which is may, may or may not be acceptable to whoever, but if you look at the actual kid in the classroom, you're gonna see the progress of the kid, him or herself, but that information is unknown. So how do you connect those dots to make sure that those who need to know, notice? Because if they're looking at this, that's a, you know, X on our back. But if they could actually see the reality, the individual reality, it could be quite different.
Well, I think parents are the key, you know, and I know, Ms. Gilpatrick, y'all have individual parent needs, if you wanna speak to that.
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna overtalk because you asked.
Well, I, I was gonna ask each one of you, how y'all felt about this, because I, because I wanna know.
I feel probably the same way everybody else in this room does, it's very defeating because of the amount of work that we put in with each individual child to grow these kids, and we see the growth, we know they're growing, we are tracking the progress weekly. And then you look at this score that's publicized, and we don't, I mean, it, it, that does not reflect truly what we're doing. My hope is that we have been open and vulnerable with these parents and tried to be very, um, forthcoming with how their specific child is doing. And like, yes, your child is growing, but they're not where the proficient marker is. But we are going to get them there, it may take time, but here's where they are. And staying in those conversations with the parents, not just give it out and say, here it is, but staying in that conversation with the parent and explaining like, yes, we're growing, here's what more you can do, here's what more we're doing. Um, and just hopefully, that's going to be, you know. Yeah, we send home the activities, we send home all that's needed for them to do their activities. So I'm hoping that that's gonna be, you know, the parents won't rely as heavily on this score, but they'll rely more on, well.
Because they're gonna rely on what they see now.
I know this is what it says, but I also know that I talked to my child's teacher and the principals, and, you know, and we, we, I know where he is, so I feel okay about it.
So, so we, I guess we would be mindful that if it's defeating to you, what about the teacher? How do they feel? How, how, we don't have to answer this now, but, I mean, I'm almost certain you guys address it. How do you get the teachers, which are on the front line, to buy into? Because this is a hard job, and it's now being made harder, and you have expectations to meet that. You know, you just, I won't say you're not gonna meet them. Hopefully, hopefully, we will, and hopefully, we can, but this is like, you know, adding an extra fifty pounds when you can't do the fifty that you're trying to do.
Well, and I'm just gonna say, our teachers know that they're more than a score. And they know their students are more than a score, and they're not gonna give up, whether it's unattainable or not. Because they know the growth that their kids are making, and we see that data every week when we're looking at students. I mean, we look at it all the time. And they celebrate, like you were talking about, that going from low SAT to high SAT is like huge for some kids. And the more we can educate our teachers on what's going on in front of them, I think the more acceptable, you know, if there's no fix.
Right, because on the flip side of that.
Because we didn't write this.
Because we need that, to, to counter what you see, uh, this comment on Facebook that demoralizes, uh, this school, this teacher, this classroom. So I'm giving that, is trying to make sure that we are aware of that, there may be extra obstacles that we have to, you know, maybe, you know, maybe climb. Because this, I've been on it long enough to know it don't look good to me. Not that we're not doing what we're supposed to do, but the projection, yeah. Well, that's what I'm saying, we are where we are, we are where we are now, and that you're being punished because you're not getting credit for what you've done.
And we do a good job with the things that we're doing, it is frustrating. But we're not gonna quit, and we're not gonna give up, we're gonna, you know, figure out a way, just like we always do.
Well, and just like, you know, you're talking about making sure the parents understand. Part of what I was saying down there was, we've gotta make sure the community and our businesses understand. Especially, I said, you know, we have a major company coming in, and the only high school in the parish is gonna go from an A to a D. What does that look like?
I didn't understand until we sat down and talked. And I know that they didn't understand it because they didn't know about it. So, so again, it's a disconnect, not here, but, you know, we just, I don't know what to tell you.
I think we have to tell our own story. I think we have to, we have to start getting the word out about the things that we're doing, and I think we, as a community, have to get together and say, what do we value in our school system? What do we want out of our school system? And this is fine, this is, they're gonna give us a letter grade, we're gonna play their game, we're gonna do, but that's not all we do. What else do we do, and what does our community want out of our school system? And that's where we have to just write our own narrative here.
The best chance is November.
That's right.
The date.
That's right.
So there's already a plan.
There's already a plan.
To do just that, and I think that would be most appropriate time, uh, to dispel any differences that may be there, because I'm, they don't know, because we do. And we're the ones that should, and we don't. Not because we're told, just.
Yeah, I mean, like, it, it.
You give us something one month, the next month's a total difference.
It just passed, and then we just went and talked about it, and doesn't look like they're gonna change anything based on what we went down there and talked about, so this is pretty much it. Um, and the K two, I've gotta figure out how that fits in there, because that, supposedly, that's gonna fit into the test form part of it too, so.
So whose school got thirty-four?
Oh.
I think.
Forty-four.
You got four, so you, you're one that's tested. Yeah, see.
Well, and, yeah. Yeah, Columbia's got thirty-four. But she also tests. And it's gonna look different.
If we do, when they add in, or where they show us how K the three's gonna be, and everybody will have literacy problems.
But we're excited about that. We, we know our literacy is growing, we're ready for that. Well, and they're already, I mean, the platform, we're already recorded when we test, and it's already submit, it's secure, just like LEAP. So they're just, we've got our baseline, so our score's coming.
Right, but see, from a parent perspective, and a, the official perspective, the parent perspective is passing, not growing. So I'm looking at it from both sides because I represent parents. So I think we just have to explain that, you know, passing is achievable, I guess, after.
I don't know. Well, I don't know. They're the same in elementary, but at the high school level, they looked at those test scores and they went, okay, what were their grades? They looked at their grades in classes, and they didn't really need the test scores.
Well, and what I like with K one, well, I mean, all dibbles, I mean, you do beginning, middle, and end, so you can have those conversations with parents at the beginning of the year, the middle of the year. And they kinda know where their kid is, you know, and, you know, they're going to be. Well, that, and we also have conversations with the teachers of, you know, make sure that their grades and their literacy scores reflect each other. Because if they're making straight As, but they're below, well below benchmark, there's, something's not adding up there. And so, and we've talked a lot to our teachers about make sure that, that they're very reflective, so that it opens the door for you to have that conversation with the parent to say, I know your child normally makes As and Bs, he's making Cs and Bs, he is struggling with his reading, this is what we're doing, this is how you can help, and we're hoping to see some progress there. So it just opens that communication with the parents, too.
I got five texts from your school teachers saying, that's not true.
My school?
No, I'm saying. My, my, my point is, we have to be careful because people are watching, so if we're not telling the truth, they will know.
We, we have individual meetings. Well, we were, we were at the school institute today. And we were at the school institute today, most of us.
Yeah.
Yeah, all of us were there, yeah. And we, we walked at a walk around the room, like a little gallery walk of what everybody's long-term range goals were and everything. And we were mind-blown how far we are ahead of everybody else. Like, our goals and our, the, what we do are so much more aligned to what the state wants than other districts. It was actually kind of shocking, we said we were the top losers.
We were looking at the, um, the dibbles, um, progress monitoring reports. All they wanted us to do today was get into it and see what it looked like. We sat and analyzed, excuse me, the data, and the, um, Natalie came over and said, y'all already have your data put in there, and she said, we said, yes. She said, how many points of data have you got put in there? And we said, beginning of the year, and then to progress month first, and she was like, oh, wow. And some schools that were there, you know, men. They had not a plan, they haven't even started.
I'm not discounting it, that all that's good in this room, but to those parents, it means nothing.
Well, and I think that's, like she said, where you have those conversations, like, we have a, you know, parent-teacher conference coming up, and I'm gonna have those dibble scores ready for them, so they worry some home, but to explain, you know, exactly what this test and how they're tested. Because some kids, you know, like, for example, one's letter naming, well, somebody's like, well, my kid knows all their letters, it's how it's tested. So it's, you know, tracking, it's paying attention, staying on that, you know, line for one minute, knowing all the letters, you know, so it's not just, do you know the letters, it's how they're tested. So educating parents on how it's tested also.
Well, I'm almost a superintendent, know how important it is, and she's making sure it was being done. So I don't doubt that at all.
Well, and Tuesdays are, Tuesday, we have a half-day dismissal, so for parent-teacher conferences, so they'll be conferencing from twelve o'clock to six o'clock on Tuesday. Just encourage parents to come to those meetings in person, so you can sit down with teachers, let them look at camera. Come sit down with teachers, so you can look at your information and see where your kid is and how you can help and how you and the teacher can work together to help your student. It's, it's only October, we have, you know, three more nine weeks to go, so now's the time to start working.
Do we have any, do we have any numbers on the percent of parents that actually participate?
In the, I make them report every time they, um, have a parent-teacher conference. We shoot for a hundred percent, I want more in person, but if you can't get them in person, at least a phone call or a Google Meet, um, to make sure that we're relentless in making contact with parents. So, but they do have to, they report those percentages to me after every parent-teacher conference. Um, they're better than they have been, I mean, every year, we try to just beat last year's goal. We have a virtual parent night coming up, elementary and junior high combined, um, where we're gonna go over each piece. Every school has a part, their teachers are gonna do, um, a part and some videos on demonstrating. Uh, twenty-eight.
This one?
So October twenty-eighth, virtual parent again. Six, six. Learn how dibbles works. So each school's gonna take a part, and they're gonna put their own twist to it and, uh, and show the parents and model what it looks like and, um, some.
A little explanation of the importance of it.
I might borrow a few teacher kids for the videos. I mean, it work, I mean, you can understand it better when you see a teacher do it with a kid instead of two adults.
Or a, a written explanation.
Yeah, or a written explanation.
A lot of things we send home, we, we realize a lot of parents don't read things, and, like, it's paper and it, we're busy. So hopefully, a video will do.
Y'all got a tough job, y'all, I'm saying. I mean, I don't, I don't know how y'all get around this. I mean, it's changing every month, from August till now. Who knew we would be in May? I mean, seriously.
We never know.
Thank you, Krista.
Thanks for going down that road and putting that in the best, duking hours.
Time media is considered superintendent's evaluation, possible executive session presented to Louisiana RS forty-two seventeen, number one.
So, um, I put that in there just in case you wanted to go back and, and look at my last year's evaluation. But the, the main reason for this is, um, this piece right here in your folder, is this legislator passed a law this summer that updated the OSN one-thirty that requires a superintendent's evaluation to include fifteen percent growth in literacy for third grade, and then fifteen percent growth in math for third grade. So, um, my contract is up December the thirty-first, and so in order for my new contract to be in effect, this new evaluation system has to be in place. And so I wanted to, I've worked hard on this, talked with lots of, um, different superintendents, and of course, Ms. Gilpatrick and Ms. Segurio and Ms. Adams, we talked because. Because my goal is gonna be completely based on third grade performance. And so it's what do we use as a metric for that? And so that's what I've, I've got here for you. Um, because it is very specific, everything in yellow, it has to be growth. And it has to be um, the percentage of students who are proficient. So for DIBELS, that means reading on or above benchmark. And for math, there is not a test, and so we had to pick a test. And so we picked a test that we were already paying for, so we didn't have to, because in two years, they're going to have a test. And so we are gonna use star math because it gives us a grade level. And so it has to be growth and it has to be on grade level by the time we test. And so that's what we've kind of worked out there. At the bottom, you'll see kind of how um, it will be weighted. And so currently you, um, I sent you out a Google form and you just ranked like a, and you put like a satisfactory and needs improvement or an unsatisfactory. Um, the way that I fixed this up for you is skip over to the third page. I took the current evaluation, which is based on the contract. And rather than a satisfactory needs improvement or unsatisfactory, you'll rate it a one to a five. So a one would be ineffective and a five would be exemplary. And that's in line with how um, the principals are evaluated on a five point scale, teachers are evaluated on a five point scale. So I thought that made sense for me to be evaluated on the same five point scale. So seventy percent of the evaluation will be based on the same tool that you've always used, just with a number instead of the letters. The other fifteen percent will be a five point scale, which looks very similar, it's on page two. It looks very similar to our students and teachers or principals and teachers write student learning targets, SLTs. And so basically, I'm writing SLTs for third grade literacy and third grade math. And so second page has exactly what that looks like. Um, based on our DIBELS data from the third grade group when they were in second grade. They scored a fifty five point six percent, we're reading on benchmark. And so consulting with Ms. Segurio and Ms. Gilpatrick and Ms. Adams, we believe that a, a healthy, very healthy goal is sixty seven percent. Which is um, twelve percent growth in, in that. And so um, that would be a three, which is a proficient. So a three is good, a three means that you are making a year's worth of growth. And then if you score over a three to a four or five, you are doing one fang up job. I would love for y'all to be a five, let's go eighty percent. The only way for me to do well is for them to do well, is for students to do well, so.
It starts with you, Belinda.
So the top one is the literacy goal that I've written and the bottom one is the math goal that I've written. Um, it's supposed to be from the end of second grade to the end of third grade, but we didn't give it at the end of second grade because the law didn't pass until the summer. So they tested their third graders um, at the beginning of the year and um, thirty nine percent of them were on grade level. So the goal is for forty seven percent to be on grade level or above by the end of the year. So they'll take that test and it says a three point nine because it's third grade ninth month when they'll take the test and that's where we want them to be. So that's the math. And so that's just the math behind the evaluation um, that I wanted to present to y'all to see if that makes sense. It's um, it's the best I could come up with. So that's, that piece of it is just the evaluation. So I don't know if there has to be um.
Well, y'all, anybody got any questions? You, you stuck with Nikki anyway. Well, because I'm, I'm leaving, so I'm just trying to make sure y'all understand. You couldn't get rid of her tonight anyway. You have to approve because she's already passed a six months time span. You have to give a six months in advance notice that you're not gonna renew a contract. So we've always done a two year, which we did, a three year, which we did. She's due for a four year contract, which is gonna put up two years outside of our board term. Uh, I don't have a problem with it, her and I've talked about it. Uh, I think you guys probably need to look at what she's talking about with regards to how you wanna grade her. Uh, I think you need to get the contract back to where it starts in uh, Ju- July one. And the reason why it's, it's there now, because when uh, I think it was Mr. Sard, Mr. Lett got hired. We, we brought somebody in on an interim basis, their contract started uh, January one, I think it was Mr. Lett. So that's why it's on December the thirty first rather than uh, June the thirty. But as for me, I, I think I need to just look at it to make sure it's what you want. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer a four year contract. I don't know if you guys ran it, you're the money man, I don't know if you talk about.
Well, that's, that's actually the next item.
You know, uh, you know, stipulation, uh, each contract, we've always, you know, increased the pay. Uh, they're gonna say that superintendent getting too much money. You can fall on whatever side fence you wanna fall on. But uh, I'm just laying out the protocol, what we have done uh, in the past for at least thirty two years. So whatever y'all wanna do, uh, it's not out of whack with what has already been done.
Since we're talking about it, this is out of whack, considering this, with a new contract.
Okay, so that, the next is the contract. And so this is my existing contract, um, the only changes are in yellow. And so um, and that's basically the dates on there and the date of today's meeting. Um, what I'm asking for, my current contract.
We ready?
Yes.
And we are.
Okay. I'm gonna make the motion that we keep Nikki as our superintendent and we're gonna sign this. And then we're going to give her this two percent every year. But then we're gonna sign this contract a little bit later.
For your contract.
For your contract.
Subject to a satisfactory evaluation.
Yeah, she's got a goal that she has to make in a year. I second that motion. I know she's got the people that's gonna work with her and help her get it done.
So Kim. Brandon, I'm trying to get what I wanna say. I mean, the superintendent just made a sacrifice that I would have never made for Kyle and Pam. For the childish work, you know, that's been given versus what she's getting now. I just don't think she did the right thing, but she's comfortable and she's satisfied with it. The board is satisfied with it. If there are any issues, they can be easily explained. We're moving forward. Everything is in line. But since she's your best friend, I want you to tell you that. Anyway, she, you need to talk to her.
He's worried.
You need to talk to her. But she made a sacrifice here tonight that most people that I know would not have done. And I think the board took that under strong consideration. It was heavily weighted. There are some other things that she has not done with regards to COVID, not taking vacations, doing other things that are more in line with stuff that she should be taking a break on. But she's not so hard as in the right place. Again, she's on ground, of course, that has a lot of weight on it. But at the end of the day, she did something that most people would not have done. So you guys ought to be thankful for what she did and how she went around. And I give a hell all the time, but we always talk. We always respect each other. And I told her from day one that when I can support you, I will always support you. And I have a testament to her for the last, I don't know many years it's been. But I think she's done a decent job. I think she's done a good job. I think she can do a better job. I think she's gonna do a better job. And I think you guys are gonna have to help her because there are some benchmarks that she's gonna have to meet. She's striving for it, but Nick again, you are the ever seen, so.
She has goals and she has the team to help her make them.
Brandon, what do you think? I mean, you, you, you fiscal responsibility.
Tell my wife about it.
Well, no, I mean, you, you always gotta gather. Yeah, when it comes to money, you do.
But no, I'm proud of the job that it was done. I'm proud to support her as our superintendent. I think, I think that she's basically gonna end up taking a ton of pay this year. By the time it's all said and done, this will make it up, you know, maybe in the next couple of years. This year, she'll end up taking a ton of pay, right? And, and I respect her for that. I think that's a sign of a good leader. I think, I think she is, I would, I, I think that she is going on a boat beyond and puts herself out there and loves this community just like we all love this community. I feel like that's what we've been, that's what we asked for when we hired her. And she's done everything that we've asked of her and more than that. So yeah, I'm proud of the fact that, that I've supported her all the way along and I continue to support her. Some things fiscally, maybe not, but other than that, yeah.
Doesn't always listen to me.
I'll leave David saying it.
Maria, remember, Ms. John, here?
I'm, I'm, I'm good with her. She's done a great job, of course, I'm good with her.
I mean, it's, like they said, it's gonna be.
And I trust her personally.
Hearing that you have a plan and you wanna align your goals with what the third grade math and English reading, then, I mean, kudos to you. If the teachers have got to do it, then you have the same goal set.
I don't, I can't say anymore than what they've already said. I just think that, that we will be here to support you as much as we can. And yeah, you're, you're cutting yourself short. I mean, it's a big job. It's a huge job and I, I don't, I don't know many people that can do it.
I'm fifteen.
All right, I think we've already had a motion of a second. Do we need real call?
I'll do one.
Sure.
Um, Mr. Randy?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Barton, absent. Ms. Ballard?
Yes.
Mr. Glass?
Here. I mean, yeah, yeah.
Ms. Bass? Mr. Pass is here. Ms. Pass.
Yes.
No, it's, it could raise my silver.
All right. Item G is a financial update.
All right, yay.
Everybody's favorite thing. I did not do a recap that I usually do in Word. I'm just hanging out sometimes.
You've been in Japan, of course.
I mean, the board made it, got booked for Tuesday, so I could have made it on the first. But anyway, financial report, it's only four pages. First page is fund one. The big difference as compared to last year is just a number flip between how we paid for insurance last year, which at this point had not been moved over to the maintenance fund. That's all shaded in pink, so you see the movement and how that worked. Everything else is kind of pretty much in line with last year. Obviously, the big red line, the item is NFP is always just gonna be an ongoing problem, unfortunately. And we're gonna figure out how to make that work instead of running nine hundred thousand dollar deficits. Next page is sales tax fund and I ain't talking too good about it. In prior years, we'd always had a motor vehicle portion that came in August. And it's about forty thousand dollars every year for those past three years. This year was the first year I moved it back into June where it should have typically been appropriately booked all these past years. So out of that seventy three thousand dollar decline, forty thousand of that was caused by that. So we were down about thirty three thousand. All of other, if everything had been booked correctly, those prior years as well. So, but this year we're taking the debt. So this year we did have a seventy three thousand dollar deficit. Lunch fund, we're off thirteen dollars net with where we were last year. So I mean, we're very much on track with where we were on that. And then maintenance fund, I'm impressed, is not worse than it is because every time I turn around change. So we're talking about something going down on the bus. In fact, my first question today was, did her phone ring any time during the past year? And she said no. So that was quite, you know, good to hear that she actually had a break. So that's all I know.
David, here's a caution for you, for somebody that's watching. If you feel comfortable with your boss's concern, parents in the district around us are distributing a two thousand dollar stipend this month. Why aren't we? What's the reason for holding the money for too much? Teachers are upset about this. I've heard several, have several reach out to me. You wanna answer that?
I think I can answer that very easily. We're paying that out at Christmas time where we thought it'd be a benefit going into that Christmas cycle to receive that money. And then it's not been voted on and Nikki and I, Nikki and I have only talked about it. She's only brought it up about moving it that way. And then maybe we'd get what we typically give out in sales tax Christmas money, moving that maybe towards spring break. And that way, everybody has money going into Christmas and everybody has money in extra check going into spring break. So that was a thought and that was the reason.
Well, next year we were able to split it up. We gave part of it in October and part of it in the spring. The state came in and said you have to give it all out by December sixteenth. So that's, or fifteenth, December fifteenth. So that, it messed up our whole get a little here, get a little here, get a little here. And so we're giving it out in one lump sum in December.
Yeah, and that's true. I've got that, so I mean, that same payout will happen, but we'll just be on it every time this year.
All right. Any other questions for David?
No, I was just supposed to.
All right.
All right, it's good.
You got anything else?
No.
All right. Item H is district leader, something.
Maria, we'll start with you.
If you look in your folder, you do have the chart that shows our beginning of the year data. Just again, if you wanna share it there, you can have it. You don't have to.
I do, you email it to me. Yeah. Oh, I do wanna share it, it's so good.
And when we're talking about, Ms. Wells, we're talking about the growth. We're seeing some effects of that growth that hopefully it will show, come up. But if you will look on your chart, you see what's yellow, the kindergarten. At the beginning of the year last year, we had twenty point one percent on benchmark or above. Those same kindergarteners went to first grade, now they're at forty seven percent.
Look at that growth.
So that's showing what we're doing is working, what the teachers are doing with interventions. But even if you look across, so the, because you can't do apples to apples, it's really apple to oranges. If you go across, kindergarten was at twenty point one last year. The kindergartens we have this year were at twenty five percent. Even that's a growth coming in from free K. If you look at first grade, first grade, beginning of the year was, last year was forty eight point three. Now that's the beginning of the year, first grade. Beginning of the year, second grade, that means they maintained. Now they're at fifty nine percent on benchmark or above. So that shows you growth. And if you will go across those same second grade, they've already met the end of the year or exceeded the end of the year. They were at fifty six percent at the end of the year. They've already beat that by the beginning of the year at being fifty nine percent. So that shows you just how much growth they're growing. Even going across, there was a little dip. But if you look at second grade, the fifty two point nine percent, those, the third grade they are now, they're at fifty eight percent. So that's showing that growth, those same kids. But even looking across, fifty two point nine percent, beginning of the year, last year, second grade, this year, that fifty nine percent. So we're seeing now that kindergarten foundational skills all the way up is coming now showing the progress we've been wanting to see. Third grade was an issue last year. We talked about how they were struggling. But look at the growth. It's not a lot, but there's growth. Forty point one percent, those are the third graders. They went to fourth grade, they're at forty two percent now. So there is growth. We do have some growth that have to work with fifth and sixth. And today during our meetings, they set up action plans on what we wanna do to support these kids. So I wanted you to see the growth that we've had. And they are developing their literacy plans, setting those goals and what action steps they're gonna be doing to get our kids where they need to be. So we just wanted you to see that.
Fifth grade, weren't you?
Yes.
Yes.
And so I saw the note there about fifth and sixth grade.
Yeah, and another thing, right, I'm sorry, I forgot about that. What we thought when we saw that dip in fifth and sixth is because this is the first year that actually took the tests online. Because usually they were taken on paper and we had actually kids say, oh, I'd rather have it on paper. But we moved it online because that's the system the state's going to. And so we saw a drop. But now with progress monitoring and things are actually gonna take it online, so they're gonna have that practice for the middle of the year. We should see a game there.
So the other ones didn't take it online, right?
They did, and that's why we're seeing growth. It didn't change. Third grade took it, the maze online last year. And so you see that growth, forty two, because they were already accustomed of taking that part of the test online. And it was new to fifth and sixth. They had never taken it online.
So that dropped from forty percent in the fourth grade to thirty two percent in the fifth grade?
And fourth grade did not take it.
What you're saying is because they went from paper to online?
Yes. And it's a different ballgame when you're looking at online because they're having to scroll and they're having to choose the correct answer to go in. So now with that practice, and we saw that curve when we went to online, we saw that drop when we did that. So it was an expected drop this year because it was the first time they were actually doing it online.
And also, didn't you have to scroll down?
Yes, you have to scroll down and some of them just having that practice on, because they'll give you part of the paragraph and then you have to scroll it down, go to the next session, and it's time consuming if you, you know, keep doing that. But now with the practice we're gonna put in place, they'll have that practice.
Our teachers have already created some, I guess, like similar practice type questions for that. And we've already seen it increasing our progress monitoring for that.
That's what I was gonna say earlier. It's probably harder for you and Katie because you get to blame everybody else if they didn't do it right. But I mean, it's serious.
Well, I mean, but that's.
It makes it tougher because every, the spotlight is on you. You know, and that may be, may not be fair, but I mean, that's the way it is. So hopefully, you know, whatever it is that you need, you know, you're getting. I think Kim, when we talk, you discussed some of that stuff when we talked a couple of months ago.
And I will say today in our literacy institute that we did, you saw the post, we were so proud of these principals that attended, their actions, their communication and willingness to share. Really, I would say, home of the game, we really are.
The people from the state department like to come to our tables because they know that our people are going to participate and our people are going to, they know that we're doing what we say we're doing because they're in our schools too. And they know who we are and what we do. And so they trust that when they call on our table, we've got an answer.
I'm sure they'll respond, yeah.
So Maria, when will that give, the middle of the year?
Uh, in December.
In December. So we should be able to come back in January and update y'all with this chart and see where we are.
And when will these test be?
Uh, end of August and September. Right, that's just coming back from summer break. And we were really worried, as you know, summer break, we were thinking a decline, but they did. What the teachers did and interventionists did from day one, from school started to be tested, showed that they maintained them or even exceeded their goal.
And they're still doing it on the computer or on paper, it's not really.
Katie's six now.
Because I don't like to take a test on the computer. I don't wanna look at it too long.
Well, your kindergarteners are taking devils on a tablet. That's not, that's out of our control. They're having to scroll too on a tablet.
Right, they are. They're having to read the letter name and, and.
And a lot of that is because it's now governed by the state because there's going to be a part of the accountability program. And so everything is recorded, like as they're taking, giving those tests, they're actually being recorded. And, and the state will pop in and listen to how they, how they talk or they make sure I can get them answers. So it's super, super monitor.
You take a kid that's got weak eyes, that's looking at this computer trying to test, 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 he or she is not gonna do well.
We have accommodations. If a child can have enlarged tics, we have the capability to do that. So we do do that for them. It's, it's a big ballgame, but I, I will say, I'm very proud of what I'm seeing.
Brian, you got anything?
Really? I mean, we've been sending out emails for Cyber Security Awareness Month to teachers. I think the one today was for like both work stuff and personal stuff, so we'll keep doing that. And then we work on the cafe downtown. I think we have all the equipment actually installed and in the building now. We just gotta work on the routing through the firewall here.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna ask Rebecca, because the last time I was down there, you know, those are some of the things that they need. So I don't know if it can be expedited, but it will be.
It should be, I think it should be done this week. So I guess. So like I said, all the actual hardware is now there. It's all coming in. We've put it all in the building. All that has to happen is the routing to this office, so.
How did the service go, Nikki?
They did well. I wish Rebecca was here. I have no idea. I know that they did...they also did ice cream at the art festival. And they, I think they profited a couple hundred dollars, so.
That's gonna be a great thing for the parents to see those kids performing. Whereas the parent...the parent restrict them at home. But when the other person get them outside their comfort zone, because I've been down there several times.
And they are also partnering with the band on Friday nights. And they are selling water in the stands. So they're doing a great job.
And those therapists are great.
They are, they are, they are.
Kim?
Um, I think they've heard from me enough to... But I do, one thing that Ms. Maria and I worked on was the high dosage tutoring. They are coming Thursday for a meet and greet with the students. That's in-person tutors. And it's extra on top of what they're already getting during the school hour. And the majority of the students are at Central, of course. But they are gonna be in all three schools, all three elementary schools. And the tutoring actually begins Tuesday.
Sound like if your parents said, my child's having a problem with math?
Oh, no, no. It's, there's regulations with any grant. It's any student who scored basic or below on math or EOLA. There's lots of different if, thens, but, this, you know, kinda thing. But basically, all of our children are serviced by highly effective interventionists. And so we're meeting the requirements with reading. We're just not meeting the requirement with math because we don't have math interventionists. So the majority of our high dosage tutoring money is going towards math, in-person tutoring. We will have some money left over for our basic children who do not currently receive intervention. So they'll have to be serviced. So it was a puzzle piece that we worked.
It was law, so we...
But it's a law, it's a law.
If that's the law, then they gave us $75,000 and told us exactly how we had to spend it. So it's...
But they didn't tell us how to spend it until it's almost due, you know. So we partnered with Study Wheel, which is a vendor for in-person because we know that virtual does not work. We've not had a good experience with Steve Carter, so we went with an in-person. So we'll see. We're anxious to see.
Where did these interventions come from?
The company hires teachers who are trained in the science of reading and highly...
The company's located in Alexandria.
The company is in Alexandria and they have a...
So these people come from Alexandria?
I think they hire out from like the surrounding areas and then they pay them. I think it's like, what, 60 something dollars a night, something like that. So they vet them, they train them, and then they come in. And they use the same curriculum that we do. So it's not something off of what they're already doing. And we will monitor it because it sounds too good to be true.
Do they go one-on-one?
It's a group of four. We do have some groups that we set up that was two or three. Depending...Maria and I tried to group the kids according to what they needed. We went ahead and did the schedule and we grouped the kids for them because we know the kids and they don't. So all they literally have to come in and do is provide the tutoring.
So is this a one-time-a-week thing?
Three days a week.
Three days a week.
For 10 weeks.
What time of day are they doing this?
They're doing it during...we scheduled it during their specials. So computer lab in those times.
Not pulling them out of reading or math?
No, we're not pulling them out of any form. So it has to be during their scheduled accelerate time or ready or one of their specials.
Sandra?
Nothing really. Our participation is good, so.
Has it picked up?
Yeah, we're seeing an increase just about every month.
What else? All right. It's a superintendent for four.
All right. I'm sweet. All right, so homecoming is Friday. Preparations at 10 o'clock, so we'll dismiss at noon. Parade downtown at 2 o'clock. And then, of course, the game kickoff at 7 o'clock on Friday. We will also dismiss Tuesday for parent-teacher conference. And so the teachers are scheduling those conferences with parents for anytime Tuesday, 12 to 6. And of course, they get a stipend, the teachers do, from 4 to 6 because it's after their work hours. So they'll get paid to do that. And then you have an invitation in your folder for our business and community appreciation breakfast. That's scheduled for November the 13th. And we're working on sending out invitations to all of our business and community partners to attend. And all of the leaders are putting together kind of a State of the Union, kind of, I guess, annual report we're gonna call it. We'd like to make this an annual thing that we do every November. Ms. Wiley is able to use her federal funds to purchase the breakfast foods. And so we'll just kinda get together and share the highlights of our school and the things that we're doing well and some of the challenges that we have. And so we're really looking forward to this community event, just tell our own story and garner the support from our community and thank our community because they give a lot to our school system. And so I'm looking forward to that.
If dreams can come true, this is gonna be exciting. I think it's gonna be, in my tenure, probably one of the best ways to speak for yourself. And I think it's gonna be good. I think you guys, you know, we don't always agree, but we support. And I think it's important to disagree, but still support. You don't have to agree with every decision. I think it would be good of all of those individuals because you guys will get a pat on the back. We're gonna make sure, so.
So.
That was a bone Tommy, ain't more?
Hey, hold here, hold here. I went to the other group and they had like 28 items in there too.
Oh, wow.
And I said, oh, hell.
All right.
I'll make a motion when you're done.